We call a meeting to order for the Wilmer City Council from Monday, October 2nd, 2017. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Schwantes.
Here.
Alvarado.
Here.
Osment.
Here.
Meske.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Join me standing for the pledge of allegiance. At the end of that, please remain standing. We'll have a moment of silence for the tragedy that happened in Las Vegas last evening.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? From the work session, I'd like to add Civic Center Refrigeration System Professional Design. There will be a resolution awarding the contract to Stevens Engineering and a resolution establishing procedures relating to compliance with reimbursement bond. Anything else from council? Seeing and hearing none, we will approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify -- I'm sorry, is there a motion to approve the agenda as revised?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign, that motion does pass. Next are the consent items. Ms. Thompson, our city clerk.
On the consent agenda this evening, we have the approval of the city council minutes of September 5th and also September 18th. Planning commission minutes is September 26th. Wilmer Municipal Utilities minutes is September 25th. Rice Memorial Hospital Board minutes of September 27th. Civic Center Arena Special Event Buy-On-Sale Liquor License Holder Permit. And to accept, the Human Rights Commission minutes of August 15th. The Wilmer Lakes Area Convention and Visitors Bureau Board minutes of August 15th. The Wilmer Community Ad and Rec Joint Powers Board minutes of September 22nd. Police Department Statistics Report for the month of August. And the Accounts Payable Report through September 27th, 2017.
Is there a motion to approve? Motion to move and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osment.
Aye.
Meske.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution or that motion passes. Next, we'll have Civic Center Refrigeration System Professional Design Services. Resolution awarding the contract to Stevens Engineering for $197,300. Mr. Brizendine.
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, before you as a request to enter into an agreement with Stevens Engineering for the design and contracting services related to the refrigeration project at the Civic Center. The quote from Stevens Engineering's in the amount of $197,300. They will design and create the bid documents for the construction of the new system. The request is coming to you today based upon the nine-to-12-month window of design and construction necessary to complete the changeover of the refrigeration plant and for us to be ready for the 2018-19 ice season. The timing is of essence for us to try to get this planning process started. So it's staff's recommendation to enter into this agreement with Stevens Engineering as they have worked with us on a number of projects, the latest being the HVAC system at the Civic Center. They're very aware of the complex. They're an industry leader in designing refrigeration systems for ice arenas. And we think that they bring the most to the table for us to complete this work in a on-budget and timely manner.
A move, staff's recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve a resolution awarding contract to Stevens Engineering in the amount of $197,300 for work on the design for the ice plant at the Civic Center. Discussion. Councilmember Plowman.
Mr. Mayor, I would move an amendment to the original motion simply to reflect a budgetary change of total project costs not to exceed $2.6 million in its entirety as opposed to the $3 million as noted.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to amend the motion to include an amount not to exceed $2.6 million. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
Is that the amount that's in the budget?
That would be the amount that would be in the budget. Two point four plus the 197 would make it two point six, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional discussion to the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That amendment does pass. Next in front of us is the resolution awarding the contract to Stevens Engineering in the amount of $197,300 with the amendment as just approved. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osment.
Aye.
Meske.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution does pass. Next is a resolution establishing procedures relating to compliance with reimbursement bond. Is Mr. O'Kens handling this or who's handling this? Mr. O'Kens, our finance director?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in order for the city council to reimburse themselves for any costs incurred on this project prior to the issuance of the debt, this resolution is needed in order to move forward with the financing of the project.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion made and seconded to establish a procedure relating to compliance with reimbursement for bond funds. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osment.
Aye.
Meske.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Next, we'll be on to the regular scheduled agenda, number eight under hearings, the 701 agenda item, which is Sunrise Estates Utility Easement Vacation. Megan DeShepper, our city planner.
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, this is a public hearing for utility easement vacation in Sunrise Estates. If you look at the map up here, it's the fifth lot on the left side of the map. This was platted back in 2005, actually, and there was an easement on the replat that is now currently a home sitting over it. There's no utilities in it. It was something that was cleaned up at the time. This is the chance for it to be taken care of. It was found during a title search, so.
Staff's recommendation is to approve?
Recommendation to adopt the resolution vacating the easement as proposed.
So moved. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody on the public that wishes to speak to this issue? Mr. Welch, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Kelly Welch, 1304 23rd Streets Southeast. I'm the president of Sunrise Estates Homeowners, and they all agree it should be vacated.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it to the council. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the utility easement vacation. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Aye.
Osment.
Aye.
Meske.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Next is an ordinance text amendment relating to Central Business District design standards. Again, this is a public hearing. Open the public hearing. Ms. DeShepper.
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, this is a text amendment of the zoning ordinance regarding the Central Business District design standards. It came before Planning Commission two meetings ago regarding a downtown development proposal, and they felt that some of the design standards were impeding the development of the property and specifically the percentage of windows that we were requiring in the ordinance as well as having a half cornice decorative look on one-story buildings. So the recommendation would be to approve the text amendment, sign it in ordinance, and publish it.
Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak to this issue? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it to the council. Council, your wishes.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the text amendment relating to Central Business District design standards. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
Just a couple of questions. I went back to look at the minutes. There were three things that were listed that were an issue. The information we received tonight references QuickTrip, but there's been no design or no drawing of what the problems were that they were presenting. And so I'm just, I'm curious. I expressed a concern. I know at the last meeting, just with, was it necessary to change the downtown standards or was there some way to work with them on that? But we haven't seen any drawings of it. I know that it states strictly about the 40 percent of windows. I've seen some trips that have windows on all three sides, and so I'm just wondering why the Planning Commission found it necessary to do this or what the design is actually. And then the third thing, you mentioned that cornice, but there was also something about the main entrance facing the street. And so could you just help us to understand what the questions are here?
Sure. Currently, the ordinance would require 40 percent of each wall facing right-of-way to be windows. This QuickTrip does have windows, but not that 40 percent. And the Planning Commission thought it was too restrictive to have a number. They felt it should just meet adjacent properties as far as windows. The second item was that the main door faced the street. They do have a door facing the street, but the main door faces the pumps. So they did meet that qualification that you could walk right off the sidewalk into their store. So they did meet that standard. And then the half cornice, depending on how you look, they have a large metal facade on their roof, and it kind of looks like a half fake, you know, decorative facade, but it's not a true cornice like the intent of the ordinance.
So is the intent of the Planning Commission to look at each development for what it needs for windows versus having a standard in it?
Correct. And they felt it should be based more of what the adjacent properties are like and not have a specific set percentage of windows.
Additional questions from council? I have one question. Would this have been something that could have been handled by a variance instead of a text amendment or not in this particular case?
They could have applied for a variance, yes. I think the Planning Commission felt it was restrictive to any future possible developments downtown.
Sure. And this ordinance was put in place just last year, if I remember it correct? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, no further questions. The recommendation is to adopt a text amendment relating to the Central Business District design standards, assign it a number, and publish it. Roll call.
Councilmember Osment.
Aye.
Meske.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that resolution passes. Next, we have city council open forum. People addressing the council have up to three minutes. And again, just as a reminder, there will be a three-minute timer up on the wall, so you'll be able to reference that. And it does make an alarm sound when it goes off, so don't be startled by that. I don't want anybody to be concerned. The first time we did it, it was pretty alarming, so we welcome the open forum. We welcome the comments. And first off, we have Gary Peterson. So state your name and address for the record, please.
Gary Peterson, 2915th Street Southwest in Wilmer. As the council looks at the economics of the gun range, I urge you to look at the full picture. There are fees from users which go toward range operation, but there are also revenues that go to area businesses from out-of-town users. Permit-to-carry classes draw students from a wide area. Also, the public shooting in the winter months draws people from a wide area. When they are in town, they shop and eat. My business, U.S. Gun Class, has concealed carry classes in 100 cities in eight states. Each year, we bring instructors to Wilmer for two-day instructor development classes using the range. This year, we had instructors fly in from Colorado, Kentucky, and Florida who joined our Minnesota instructors. They spent money in the community for lodging and food. Some of them stayed extra days in the Twin Cities for shopping and sightseeing, bringing economic value to the state. So instead of thinking of the indoor range as a business that has to cash flow, the range should be considered as a city amenity such as the pool, civic center, parks, and trails. These valuable amenities bring a lot of enjoyment to area citizens and economic benefits to area businesses. Please take these benefits into account as you consider the important value the indoor range brings to our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Jim Anderson. State your name and address for the record, please.
Mayor, council, thank you. Jim Anderson, 7270 21st Avenue Northwest in Pannock. I represent the range from the standpoint of I help Steve Brizendine and his group, Ryan Harper, and others set up the schedule for public shooting nights at the range. So I'm here tonight to speak about the range. I believe you all have some range data that pertains to the new rates that were proposed and the expenses of operation. Listed here, the cost of operation, $43,675. Cost of repairs, $55,000. I made the assumption that that's a two-year cost. You had repaired every two years for replacements. Does anybody know if that's a correct assumption?
Staff will get back to you with an answer on that.
Okay. If we assume that it is a two-years, then you combine half of that, $27,500, plus the $43,000 operating expenses, and you come up with $71,000 operating expenses for a year. If we look at the revenue from 2016, it was $10,460. Divided by that, $71,000 is a contribution of 15 percent, which is fairly good. I took a look at your comprehensive annual finance report, and the expenditures in there for the community center were somewhat similar, $80,000 annually. And the contribution that I could find in the service charges was $7,900 or a contribution of about 10 percent. Since those are similar budgets, I thought, well, why are we doing 10 percent on the community center? But you're trying to really raise these rates on the gun range, and it's already contributing more. So I'd ask you that you revisit those rates and not make the increases because I think you'll see a decline in the number of users. They did have a presentation in here for the revenue received of $12,270, which is only $2,000 more than the $2,016. I'm not sure how that was derived, but it does come up to be 17 percent contribution. So again, I would ask you to keep those rates lower so we have more users and more people enjoying that amenity, as Gary mentioned. You don't have a revenue stream for the parks where you've spent a lot of money, so here you at least have a contribution. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Dave Little. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is David Little, 2201 21st Street Southwest. I have three things briefly. Number one, please explain why terminating payments to the downtown development is on the agenda. Number two, I'd like to give a big thank you to Beverly, Doherty, and the many others who have worked on the downtown project. And number three, what is the plan for downtown going forward? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Betty Rested. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Betty Rested, and I am not a resident of Wilmer. I live in Spicer, but I am a registered nurse at Rice Memorial Hospital, and we appreciate the opportunity.
Can we get your address, please?
Oh, 401 Harriet Street, Spicer.
Thank you.
We appreciate the opportunities to share our concerns about our hospital's negotiations with Centricare and ACMC. The hospital has been sharing information with us, and we appreciate their attempts to reassure staff. However, the information they provided last week at staff meetings lacks some answers to some very crucial questions that we all have. They still haven't put anything into writing, so anxiety continues to be high with staff regarding what they plan to do with patient care and staff. They say they want to keep the patient care local, but they are not specific about what that means. Will patients receive the same services in Wilmer, or will they need to travel to St. Cloud or other places for the care they now receive at Rice Memorial? The one plus was the recruitment, the physician recruitment, which will be a great benefit. However, we're very concerned for the hospital's sake, but it's a 24/7 type of coverage that would benefit both the emergency room and the hospital services. And have you looked at what's happened with the other hospital consolidations in Minnesota such as Albert Lee, Fred Lee, and St. Paul? Services there were transferred or lost, and patients have to travel long distances now instead of receiving the care they used to get close to home. Management says they'll honor our contracts and provide comparable retirement packages. They don't give us details of how some of these programs would be implemented and whether they'll be changed unilaterally in the future. Please keep asking questions and that hold Rice Memorial, Centricare, and ACMC accountable for their plans. We all just want the best for the community and the patients. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we're up to item number 10 on the agenda, which is consideration to approve the preliminary and final plat for Heidecker Edition. Ms. DeShepper, this, Megan.
Heidecker Edition is a preliminary and final plat submitted by M&amp;S Properties. It's on the corner of First Street and 28th Avenue Southwest. They're both already developed properties. Lot one is, or lot two is being proposed to acquire 30 feet from the lot to the west for a parking expansion. Both lots are already serviced with utilities, and everything is in place. So the additional land will just be used for the parking lot expansion, and they will gain 18 spaces. Staff recommends approving the preliminary and final plat.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the preliminary and final plat for Heidecker Edition. Discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does pass. Next, we have consideration of a public hearing for city charter amending ordinance 7.05. Mr. Halliday will be presenting on that. There's one thing that I want to make sure is that we're going to set that hearing for November 6th. Is there anybody on the council that plans on being out of town that day? Because if they're going to be out of town that day, we've got to change that date because it takes the entire council in attendance to pass that.
What was that date?
Now, the date, the proposed date is November 6th. So we'll have Kevin go ahead and do his presentation. If you can check your schedules, and then if we have to move the date, then we just move the date at that time. I'm sorry, do you want to introduce?
No, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify that there's basically, I think, three meetings where you could vote on this after the public hearing, the night the public hearing is given, if it's set for November 6th.
Right.
The second meeting in November, and I believe the first meeting in December would also be within that one-month window.
Any new window?
So you have three opportunities. So if you're not all here on November 6th, you have two other chances.
Correct. Okay, thank you. Yes. Mr. Halliday.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I'm Kevin Halliday, current chairman of the Charter Commission. And on behalf of the Charter Commission, I am here tonight to present to you an amending ordinance to Charter Section 7.05, the recall section. Subsequent to the recall in past months, the commission took upon itself to look at the procedures, to see what could be handled better on behalf of our citizens and their workload and the anxiety and the angst of the elected officials. And we've come to the conclusion that we need some amendments. I'm not going to go over them line by line as this ordinance is presented to you in legislative format because I know you're astute in reading those, but I'll hit three of the highlights. First, we wanted to put the workload of the citizens, if this was so warranted, to good use by having the city attorney already make a decision on the validity of the claim. By doing so, the first procedure stays the same where the committee is gathered and they have committee members and circulators who register with the city clerk to prove that they're voters, and we didn't change that. But the current step then sets the citizens embarking on a petition and the attorney's actions subsequent to that. We feel that it's best to put that ahead of the circulation of any petition, and so we have changed that in this proposal to be right after the certification from the city clerk that they are legitimate committee. The sample petition then with its 250 words, that's in the current charter, no change there, goes off to the city attorney for his or her determination and then, which is a 14-day threshold, which was currently in the ordinance anyway, and then the members would know if they have a legitimate petition going forward. In the last recall, a new procedure was discussed where the chairman of the recall committee, hearing the rumors, and you probably all heard them, that the petition had been circulated ahead of time and ahead of full authorization by the procedures. The chairman of the recall committee wisely came into the city clerk treasurer's office and brought a sample petition in, secured a initialing and dating of that petition, and then circulated the petition, and 100 percent of the petitions that came back were of that format. That's a procedure that was discussed by the Charter Commission and felt it was imperative to put into the ordinance. And in Section E, if you read that, it is listed there of getting the full signature and date of the city clerk. And that would take care of any of those rumors that efforts were made ahead of schedule and put that to rest. And just the last point I want to make, and all of these procedures, we hope, are for the betterment of the work of the citizens, but also to conclude the matter quickly if it's not have any legal basis. We understand that the threshold for a recall is set pretty high, but in 40 years, we'll probably all forget that. The last point is those type of efforts are also important to get the city attorney's opinion on referendum and initiative, too. And if the council finds this palatable, we will be back in the near future to change that on those sections also. Just as an example, if some group wanted to have an initiative of putting term limits on city council members, to go through that effort, work 90 days to secure so many signatures, send it to the city attorney who simply would say, "That's unconstitutional. You can't do that." We need in that area also to get the city attorney's opinion in the forefront. Having said that, those are the highlights. It is the Charter Commission's recommendation that you consider this amending ordinance, set the hearing in the near future. set the hearing in the near future. It's a national holiday on November 6th, but I'll come off my tree stand to be here if that's the hearing. And we recommend that adoption. So without any further questions, there are Charter Commission members behind me. I do want to thank Mr. Kelly Welch mainly, who really spearheaded this. And of course, Mr. Robert Scott also took a few of our words out, the end and orders, and made them legalese and properly put it together. But we think we have this fully reviewed and ready to improve the process should it ever be used again.
Mr. Halliday, could you just identify your fellow commission members?
I'm not certain I can do that, because they were coming in the door.
If you're on the commission, please stand up. How shall we do that?
We got them.
Excellent. Great. Thank you guys for your service. We appreciate it. So thank you so much. Great. Mr. Scott, any further additional comments?
I'll just address the procedure briefly. This ordinance is presented to you. This is a little different than ordinances that come before you. This ordinance would affect an amendment to the city charter. This is entirely, this procedure is entirely driven by a state statute. The one possible way a charter can be amended without it going to a vote of the electors is for the commission to make a proposal to the city council, as they have done just now, and for the city council then to approve it unanimously, as well as having the mayor approve it at a meeting after a public hearing. And there's timeframes in there that I know I'm working with your city clerk to make sure that they're all satisfied. But procedurally, that's how this works. And certainly, if there's any questions on that point, I'd be happy to address them. Otherwise, I don't have anything else.
Okay. And so we don't take questions now, we take questions during the public hearing, I believe, if I remember correctly. And so, council, what I'd be looking for is a motion to introduce, to set the public hearing for November 6th at 7:01 PM.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to set a public hearing for a charter amendment for November 6th, 2017, at 7:01 PM. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Goes opposed, same sign? That motion does carry. Kevin, thank you and your crew for the work. And it's dark out at that time, so you'll be able to be in here plenty of time. And we'll even accept you in your hunting garb. So thanks for your work. Thank you also to the other commission members. Next is consideration to terminate further payments to Wilmer Downtown Development. Missed one. Did I miss one? I'm sorry. Consideration of adopting a resolution for agricultural land exemptions of special assessments. Ms. Thompson, or city clerk?
It's, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's a policy of the city to temporarily exempt from assessment certain lands currently used for agricultural purposes. Each year contact is made with the listed landowners to ascertain their desire to place land in agricultural use for the 2018 crop year. Attached is a resolution that provides the property owners' names and the various properties who have made application for agricultural land exemptions and have met the criteria contained in the city's comprehensive assessment policy. And it is staff's recommendation to approve the resolution approving the agricultural land exemption of special assessments for these properties.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made and seconded to consider the adopting of a resolution for agricultural land exemptions of special assessments. Discussion. Rule call.
Councilmember Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution does pass. Next is consideration to terminate further payments to Wilmer Downtown Development. I'll introduce this. The, some members of the Wilmer Downtown Development met with Mr. Holland and I approximately a month and a half ago. And that was after a conversation that Councilmember Fagerly and I had had in regards to Wilmer Downtown Development. Around the first of the year, there was some payments that were due to Main Street Organization, and those payments had not been made. And there was a request of the membership to make voluntary donations to make those payments. Subsequent to that, there was a meeting held at City Hall where an agreement was made that the city, and it came before the council, to make those payments to Main Street. And those payments were made. The meeting that the administrator and I had with some members of the Downtown Development Group, they talked about some struggles they were having with attendance at their meetings and that they weren't able to get quorums for membership votes and those types of things. And so we did a little more research on that. I think Mr. Holland met with them one additional time after we met. And then I had a conversation with Mr., or with Councilmember Fagerly, and we were going to bring this last, two weeks ago, to the meeting. And Mr. Fagerly was out of town and not here, so we, I held it over till this meeting. So I'm recommending that their work will continue as Wilmer Downtown Design Center. That is not stopping. But the payments to Wilmer Downtown Development on behalf of the city would not continue. Also, in addition to that, and attached for your review, I believe it's attached, it's actually on the next agenda item, we received an email from Wilmer Downtown Development asking to be excluded from the responsibility of the Holliday's parade. And so that'll be on our next agenda item, that we'll be dealing with that. So subsequent to that, I am bringing this to you for your consideration. The council, of course, has it funded in this year's budget. The other thing that you'll see in there is that there would be a group of people that would get together to talk about what the next steps for downtown would look like. Does that look like, you remember a couple of years ago, I had placed in the budget money for a downtown coordinator? And that was not approved by the council, but that had been placed in the budget. So it'd be just a conversation that would happen with Councilmember Fagerly, our city administrator, our human resources director, and myself, to just start having that conversation so we have something to bring back to you as a council. Downtown is important. What happens in downtown is important, but I just want to make sure that we're doing it in the right fashion. So with that, I would recommend that we approve stopping additional payments to Wilmer Downtown Development and also the formation of a group to formulate a proposal to move the downtown forward. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Councilmember Fagerly.
You know, it's unfortunate that it's come down to this, because there's a lot of good people serving on the board and all the many committee, different committees they have to help the city and the downtown. The issue started when they bought the building where the brewery is, the hub. And they had plans for the brewery. They were going to put a hub in there so local farmers, garden growers could go in there and use that, the ovens and refrigeration. And then they were going to have a pizza shop and a Spur's Mexican restaurant. Well, they signed a contract with Preservation Alliance of Minnesota, PAM. They got 51% ownership of the building. And it, they've spent a lot of money in there. And it's not even done. We had two tenants sign a lease, and PAM would not finish the building. So we got an attorney involved because they wouldn't give keys out to the building. They had to call down there to them to basically let a plumber in or electrician. So they ran out of funds because they had to pay an attorney, close to $3,000, to work for them. Finally, the board said, "Forget it. Just give them the keys and we'll see what happens." Well, now, we understand, they really couldn't talk about it because there was a gag order from PAM. So that's why no news has been coming out about it. There's still a contract with one of the restaurant owners that wants to go in there, and they put booths and everything in, but PAM went ahead and signed a new lease with the brewery there and gave them some more space. So those people, they wanted the restaurant out of business and, well, they never even started, but she went to Benson to start a restaurant there. But now I've heard they might get the building back in March. So I don't know how it's on a-
Who's they?
The LLC of the Design Center, Limited Liability. So it's a mess, and we need to figure this out and start fresh. And that's what we hope to do, because it was a good committee and good organization and good people. So we'll work through it.
District. Councilmember Osmus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we don't get it back, or if it doesn't go back to the LLC, what's PAM's intent? Or what?
They won't talk to anybody. So I don't know. And they've had new board members, too. It was more liberal, you know, three years ago when this all started, before I got to be liaison. And it's just a stepping stone for people to go to other state agencies, so. And now, there's supposed to be a lady in Granite Falls that works for them, based out of there, but there's no communication, so.
Why do they still have interest in this building if they're not doing anything with it?
It looks good on their resume at PAM. So I don't know. You think they'd want to get it done, so you get some tenants in there, so it'd cash flow and pay the rent. You know, the Design Center has many opportunities from different agencies to put a hub in, but we have no place to go with one. And we don't, I don't want them to buy another building. That's the worst thing we can do. But those monies haven't been spent, so they'll go back to the Ag, Department of Ag, and various other lenders. But then there is quite a debt on the building, too.
Councilmember Mesky.
Can you maybe elaborate? Because the mission of the Downtown Design Center, it's my understanding that you just said, if I hear it correctly, they're going to continue to function, they're just do so without the support of the city. How do we, as a city, continue to have our interests in the downtown expressed then if we have a private entity now moving those things forward as well? And are we going to cross up? I mean, I think there's still grants out there and other things that they were doing. How's that marriage going to work if we start another entity that deals with downtown? Or what you were talking about with the downtown coordinator, whatever it looks like? We seem to have more fingers in that pot.
I'm not sure if they will continue. They don't have a quorum now. One board member just resigned last week, and we haven't had a quorum for two meetings. We met the third Wednesday of every month.
But they still may get the building back? Would there not be-
The LLC.
Yeah.
Might, yeah.
So. It seems critical that if you have a plan to put something else in place, that that needs to happen sooner than later. If we're moving this out, it seems like the city's interest in downtown is now, would be separated. I mean, not like, not as if the organization did everything, but we had a visible effort in trying to do downtown development, and it seems like this would pull it back if we don't have another entity doing something, but.
Yeah, I just want to, you know, the council all received an email today from Ms. Doherty. And, I mean, nobody's criticizing the work that she's done and the work that she's doing in our community. And, you know, they're trying to, I mean, Wilmer Downtown Development will continue and it's not going away, is what the email says. And they're going to manage the three active grants and, I'm sorry, eight active grants and three pending grants under the local foods master plan in the development for the past three years. So, you know, I'm not exactly sure how that's all going to look, but that's why we wanted in the same motion that we're going to terminate this, that we would have a process put in place to quickly reckon order and get a new plan moving forward. And, you know, that plan has not yet been developed because we haven't met. Based on this meeting, I would anticipate that we would meet within the next week or two and probably have something back to you, at least a format back to you within the next month, I would hope, at the most. Councilmember Christensen followed by Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does the city have any liability here, anywhere? And to how much? The two and what?
Mr. Scott, have you reviewed that at all, or Mr. Holland?
Based upon the financials I've seen, there's no debt or anything that leaves us open to, you know, have to pay anything back or anything like that. So I don't see any liability in that sense, no.
I know the EDC has given them some money to be paid back. My understanding is that PAM issued the first $65,000 to buy that building with the intention that WDD would pay it back, and I don't believe they've paid any of it back. And there's, the original agreement with PAM was 70% of that building was to be used for food and the other 30% for the brew pub. If the brew pub got over 30%, my understanding is that they had to pay it back this, I think it was $191,000 grant. Has that come into play somewhere? Since they say, they say now the brew pub is expanded?
That wasn't discussed when the mayor and I met, but we did briefly outline what you're talking about as far as the percentages and the purpose of the building. And as someone that's administered, something like that, that once you violate that contract, yeah, it shifts to the different mode. And so, but I think this goes back to that, the PAM organization and their liability and, you know, what those enforcement or compliance with that contract will be.
So then, back to the city, we don't have any liability.
Mr. Scott?
And, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, unless there's more to this than I'm aware of, and I have not been asked to look at this issue specifically, but I am generally aware that, you know, Wilmer Design Center, or Wilmer Downtown Design is a private entity. There's a distinction between its activities and the activities of the city. The only tie, so to speak, that I'm aware of is that the city has appropriated money to it as it's authorized to do under statute, but I don't even think there's a contractual arrangement between the city and the downtown group. So, no, I don't see any prospect for city liability for this project.
So the thing we have hanging out there then is the utilities that we brought into the building, which was amounted to $29,000 originally, and that's paid in property taxes biannually, twice a year. And if WDD owns, well, PAM owns the building now, correct, right? 51% there? So then they're liable for that, so we should see those funds so we wouldn't be out the property tax. It sounds, you know, I don't blame anywhere, but in management is everything in any business, and it sounds like it was managed poorly.
Councilmember Alvarado.
It just seems like it's a shame that we have a property and we can't do anything about it. We're kind of, I feel like we're being held hostage or something. I don't know if that's the right terminology, but it's a little frustrating that we can't use some sort of legal recourse or something to get something done. Obviously, we want to revitalize our downtown and grow it, so if there's anything we can be for that, but I don't know what that would be. I'd have to talk to our administrator or Mr. Scott, see if they had any ideas.
So, we have a motion on the table to consider terminating further payments to Wilmer Downtown Development. The motion has been made and seconded. In the absence of further discussion, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next is consideration of transfer of funds to Wilmer Fest for the Holidays Parade. So, subsequent to the conversation that Mr. Holland and I had with people from Wilmer Downtown Development, they had inkled to us at that time that they had a desire not to do the Holidays Parade in downtown because of the cost. They told us that the cost of putting the parade on was approximately $13,000, and the city contributed approximately $5,000 of that to them. There were discussions that took place in regards to that, and after we received notification last week, which is included in the packet, we made contact with Wilmer Fest folks, and Ike and I had a, I'm sorry, the city administrator and I had a conversation with folks from Wilmer Fest last week, and they were going to proxy their board to see if there was an interest. And that has been done, and there is an interest for them to pick up the Holidays Parade for us so that we have one again this fall. Again, it would be held in November, and the understanding would be is then the $5,000 that we would have transferred to another organization would be transferred to Wilmer Fest. They will do their own private fundraising to put the dollars together to make this happen in addition to the $5,000. But we need to understand as a council and as a community that it'll look a little different than it's looked before. Now, Mr. Miller's here, and I believe he's prepared to make some comments if we want him to, but my recommendation is that we authorize the finance director to transfer the $5,000 from Wilmer Downtown Development to Wilmer Fest for the specific purpose of the Holidays Parade, and I would make that recommendation.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Discussion by council, and then council, do you want to hear from Mr. Miller on Wilmer Fest, or what would you wish to... Mr. Miller, would you like to come to the table, I'm sorry, come to the podium and kind of tell us a little bit about what your plan is, if you think we can make this happen? And I know that this has thrown on you a whole, I think it's a week and two days at this point, or three days, so...
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, our plan is fluid at this point in time. We have been in conversation with those who've been part of the committee in the past and have worked on the Holidays Parade, so we actually have a meeting set for 7:00 tomorrow morning to further discuss it. We have been in contact with many of the organizations and businesses that have been involved, both at a sponsorship level and as a, well, for instance, Bethel Church and their chili feed, the Presbyterian Church and coffee. So, we have been in contact with them to garner their interest in the event. We'd like to keep it as close to what it has been in the past. There's that expected experience of the holidays. We have been very involved in it from a Wilmer Fest standpoint, with area festivals coming and being part of the parade, as well as hosting some festivities in prior to the event itself on that date. So, we're intending to move forward with it, just like we would normally, and try to continue to keep those things in place that have been there in the past.
Council, any questions either of myself or Counselmember Fagerly or Mr. Miller on behalf of Wilmer Fest? Counselmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have we ever seen the financials for the Holidays Parade from WDD? Because it hasn't been too many years that we've been giving the $5,000, and I'm in all favor, favor of giving it to Wilmer Fest for doing this, but my understanding was it paid for itself even prior to us, the $5,000.
Counselmember Christensen, that was prior to my time, so I apologize. One time I can use that excuse. Mr. Okens, have we seen the financials specific to the parade? I know we've seen the financials for Wilmer Downtown Development, but specific to the parade, have we?
Specific to the parade, they were included in general totals in their reports given to the city.
So, there was no line item then saying this is revenue and this is expense?
In their overall downtown development, not in the city portion in itself, which is a portion of their total.
Right. Counselmember, I'm sorry, Counselmember Fagerly, followed by Mesky.
It normally costs between $12,000 and $13,000, and with the donations, they broke even or lost maybe $500, so...
That's our understanding as well, and you look into place with, they've had the petting zoo with the penguins and the reindeer, they've had reindeer rides. There's obviously an insurance cost that goes along with that. That might be one area in which we are prepared for that because of the Wilmer Fest festivities already. We have a liability insurance policy in place. We've just had to amend that to add an additional event into it, so we don't have probably as significant of an investment in the insurance piece of it. But there are definitely some liability with open fire pits that have been used as part of the event with the animals and such. I mean, those are my understandings, some of the bigger costs involved in it. The petting zoo probably is the biggest investment piece of it. So, I think in the past, if I could speak to that, the fundraising side of it was able to cover the expenses of it. That has tailed off over the years from what we have seen. We've been able to look at a little bit of the information over the last three years to give us at least an idea of who's been involved in the past, and so that was be, will be one of our biggest goals here in the next five and a half weeks, to garner that kind of support to continue it forward.
Thank you for taking it over, though.
We didn't want to see it go away. That was kind of our thing. We've been very involved in it from an entertainment perspective. We've brought in, I think, last year of the 30 floats, I think we had 13 of them. They were visiting royalty. We bring them in early enough in the day that we go out and we do some caroling and some crafts with many of our senior citizen centers and retirement areas, and so we've been able to do that and be part of that festivity piece of it, and then be part of the parade at night. So, we'd like to see that continue on. It's another piece that Wilmer Fest can do.
Counselmember Mesky.
I was just going to say thank you, Wilmer Fest, absolutely. And keeping tradition alive, and those comments are really well, well-positioned. And I really, as you were starting to talk about, you were making some changes, I was, that was always going to ask you about, but if, it sounds like perhaps you're thinking maybe minimal changes, especially if fundraising works out well.
I would think for this year, minimal changes. We do have some, I always say, delusions of grandeur. There are some fun activities that I would like to see that have possibilities to get more involvement from the downtown businesses. We've talked with Foxhole and the Goodness and the Barn Theater have been involved in the past to some degree, but what are the other things we can do? Whether it's maybe a beanbag tournament out in front of Foxhole that afternoon, maybe some artificial ice being brought in to downtown that we could set up and actually do some skating. We're not going to flood the streets, but maybe we can bring in some of the artificial ice pieces. Obviously, we're going to take more investment, but again, it adds to that amenity and to those activities going on as part of the celebration.
And remember, when you do a good job, we're going to be asking you to do this again and again.
Yeah, that's always my fear. Ask me how it went in two months, and we'll see.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselmember Swantus.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. What is the date of it?
If I am correct in my recollection, it is November 18th. That is the Saturday before Thanksgiving.
All right. So, folks have it at home to help us make this a great event. Thank you.
Please schedule it in.
Okay, we have a motion to consider transferring the funds, the $5,000, to Wilmer Fest for the Holidays Parade. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor of the motion signify by saying, roll call, I'm sorry, it's a transfer of dollars. This is a roll call.
Counselmember Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Swantus.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that resolution passes. Next is a proclamation for Family Promise of Canduay County, and I've taken the honor of passing the reading of that to Mayor Protam Nelson to assist me with the reading of that this evening.
Thank you. This is a proclamation from the City of Wilmer. Whereas in August 2015, Family Promise of Canduay County began operations dedicated to helping the most vulnerable among us, children and families who are temporarily homeless. Whereas Family Promise supports numerous congregations of our area's faith community, which provides the facilities to house and feed guest families, thereby making a real difference in the lives of their neighbors in need. And whereas believing that every child deserves a home, Family Promise of Canduay County and its more than 450 volunteers empower families in making their transition from homelessness to sustainable independence. And whereas over the past year, Family Promise of Canduay County has served 22 adults and 25 children. Now, therefore, I, Marv Calvin, Mayor of the City of Wilmer, do hereby proclaim the week of October 22nd through the 29th, 2017, as Family Promise Week. In witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause to be a fixed, the official seal of the City of Wilmer this second day of October 2017, and it's signed by Mayor Calvin.
Thank you for reading that, and is there anybody here from Family Promise? Okay. Thank you very much for the work that you do in our community. We'll make sure that you get this signed proclamation, and our city clerk will make sure that that gets out. And thank you for the work that you do assisting us in our community. Next, we have a council discussion in regards of work session versus committee structure. This is something that came off of the work session from last, two weeks ago, and so, council, it's in front of us for discussion, and I know we've had this as a discussion item at a couple of our work sessions, but the, you'll see there's no CAR report for this. Really, it's up to the council to decide how they want to function in this fashion, and if they want to continue in the work session process or the committee structure. One thing that I heard consistently is that we need to have a committee structure for our labor, and there's also been discussion about that our finance committee should also be outside of that. So, with that, I'll open it up for discussion to the council. I think it would be better to have the discussion first and then a motion to follow in this particular case, simply because I'm not sure that there's clear direction as how we want to go. If someone wanted to make a motion, I certainly would entertain that at this point, but we may want to have some discussion prior to that. I know we've had a lot of discussion up to this point, so... Council, what are your wishes? Counselmember Alvarado.
I'm, I'm in favor of maintaining the work sessions going with the labor committee and finance committee. I just don't, I believe we got to give it more time. I, I think that's, that's where I stand on it.
Counselmember Nelson.
I would like us to stay with the work session. For sure, the labor committee, I thought we had talked about getting regular finance information in our work sessions and that we would, we could hold a quarterly or do something with that. I thought, I was hoping that we had some of the detail that we had talked about at the work session before in, in writing or in some additional information. So, I am in favor of continuing the work session, but I do think we talked about more structure in the work session and some additional, making sure that the four different committees had some reports. I think labor could stand alone with that, but I'm looking to some of the things we talked about at the work session in that summary, if any, if there's any more detail there to make a motion.
The other thing that we talked about is that the fifth Monday, that we would have that as a special work session, kind of to catch up. So, there was, as I remember, there was consensus about staying with the work session with the labor committee and the fifth Monday being a special work session that we would use to get caught up, if you will, and we could have that meeting longer. It wouldn't have to be just held to that hour and, hour and a half. We could schedule that meeting for a two- or three-hour meeting. We need to catch up. The thing that was also discussed, then, there wasn't consensus on, that I felt, was the fact of the finance committee. And you're correct, Counselmember Nelson, in that we ask for more structure, and I think that's why Mr. Holland has, you know, he's given us these weekly agenda updates that we all get every two weeks. That's what's coming up on the next work session. We're being briefed on what's coming. Finance is to report once a month in a formal, formal report, but, so that's how we were going to try to address it. We haven't had time to do that, simply that we ran out of time, or it's happened that, you know, we weren't doing that process. So, like Counselmember Alvarado said, you know, we haven't given enough time to try to get Mr. Holland's touch on it. You know, he's only been here six, no, five months, so... So, that's kind of where that's at.
I'll make that motion to do what you said.
Which is what?
Stay with the work session, have a, have a separate committee structure for labor, have finance report monthly, use the fifth Fridays...
Fifth Monday.
Fifth Mondays, excuse me, fifth Mondays for a special work session to do catch-up or perhaps even have more formal finance information could be part of that with that. But to continue the work in process and with staying with the work sessions. Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Would you want to put a timeframe on this for evaluation again, or would you want to leave it just open-ended?
I think we should leave it open-ended and can consider it a work in progress, and if it's not working, I think we should be responsible enough to look at and make changes instead of putting, I mean, we said six months, and we're now 10 months into it, and we haven't decided, so I think if we make this decision, I think we don't need a timeframe. We just need to be conscientious enough to evaluate ourselves.
Okay. Counselmember Plowman, followed by Osmus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for clarification as to the details of the motion, so is the intent of the motion, then, to strip out from our standard work sessions, strip out the labor items and strip out the financial items to be then addressed on that fifth Monday?
Only the labor items, I think, should be scheduled as a separate meeting, but it should include all council members. I think that was something that we were united on, that everyone needed to hear the same message. I think the finance could be presented in our regular work sessions and perhaps on those fifth Fridays, but I don't think we should have a separate finance committee, per se.
Can I follow up with one more? Okay. So, that fifth session, then, would it consist of only those items, or would there be then possibly other items added to it?
Anything that we would need to catch up on, I would say.
Okay.
So that we don't overload ourselves on the Monday nights before council meetings.
All right. Thank you.
So, what I was hearing consensus on was that you wanted to have an opportunity to catch up on some of those things that you didn't get done, and so that was kind of the reason for it, so...
Counselmember Osmus. Sorry, even had you written down?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was also going to ask questions about labor. You answered that it was going to be a separate night. I do like that we were all be, able to be present. We haven't designated when that would be yet. Okay.
Counselmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think everybody knows where I stand. I think we should have all four committees personally. I think we're doing a big disservice to our taxpaying public. You know, we preached, or the mayor preached about transparency, want to be as transparent as possible, and we just are not with, without these committee meetings to the public, and it's uncomfortable to come to a meeting here, stand up at the podium, it's like a judge and a jury. I just think we're doing a big disservice to our taxpaying public, our constituents, the ones that voted us in here. So, I would speak, I can't add an amendment to it, I can, but I'm not going to because I know it'll fail, but I, along with the public, am, don't know what's going on in the city because of these work sessions. We come for a couple hours at 5:00, 5:15, and you can't take all the labor, community development, public works, public safety and financing in an hour and a half. It's just impossible. And as far as the labor committee being the full council, in other words, several of us can miss if we can't make it. Same with the fifth Monday of every month. We're going back to more committee meetings. We are. Could just go back to the four committees, meet 4:45. Could just go back to the four committees, meet 4:45 like we used to, but I think the transparency has gone here, and I think a lot of the public would agree with me. I've had several calls on that, as a matter of fact. It's, "What's going on? What's happening?" Instead of, "Oh, what's going on?" I don't even know what's going on in public works. I used to be the chair of the public works, public safety. I just see them fixing something here, fixing something there, buying a new truck. I don't think that the new council members are doing themselves right by sticking with this work session. They don't have an idea how well the committee structure actually worked. And it's... You know, the work session is fine. It's easy for us. It really frees up our schedule, but it isn't good for the public. It just is not. I'll leave it at that.
Councilmember Mesky, favorably.
Well, I kind of sat in the middle on from some of this discussion. I think that labor and finance could be separate. I applaud the move towards having a labor committee, so we're getting one out of four back. If the finance is on trial, then if it goes and it gets better at the working meetings, I will say, "I think this has worked." But if it doesn't, then there may be a second one coming back, a finance committee as well. And I'm willing to give that a try because it seems like we're going towards a collaboration and consensus of trying to go for both sides. So I appreciate bringing the labor committee back. I think that's a good idea. Finance, I guess we'll wait and see. But otherwise, I mean, I can see the benefits, but at least the new folks will see how the committee structure works for at least one committee.
Councilmember Fager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I prefer the committee meetings. 14 days without seeing each other, that's a long time. An email just doesn't do it for me because I don't like these things, so I abstain.
Councilmember Nelson.
I do have to speak to transparency because I do think that the work sessions actually do create more transparency for our constituents and for us as council members. We are all at the table. We're all hearing the same thing at the same time. I've had requests that we actually... The work sessions be live so that people can see the work sessions before the council meeting. I think that our public is asking us to be transparent, and I think that our work sessions need some work to make sure that we accomplish all the things that we're responsible for. But I really do see it as a more transparent way for all of us to hear the same thing and experience the same thing. It's our responsibility to read the information. It's our responsibility to ask the questions and to ask the information. But we all are hearing it at the same time, and the constituents are hearing that also. So I don't see transparency as an issue between committee structure and the work session. So I think it's important for our community to know that we are working to be transparent.
Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, along with... I guess I would echo Mr. Mesky's points that were made, and I would give some agreement with a couple of the other senior members here, that I had some experience, and I... When I entered the council, I took part in the various committees, and I do feel that there were areas of benefit during those committee meetings, although it was a more rigorous schedule to maintain, especially with work and little kids at home and whatnot. I would say, you know, at this point, when the discussion came up, I still slightly favored that atmosphere. However, I think, given the discussion that we've had, I think it's only fair... We did acknowledge that this was a new way of doing things, and it would be a little bit foolish of us to think that we were going to get it spot-on, perfect, like right off the bat. That's just a little nearsighted. And so I think it's only wise, now that we've switched, okay, we're discussing some of the problems with it and our feelings therein. So I think because we're willing to make some changes and, you know, see how that goes and adapt to that, I... In, you know, in weighing the pros and the cons, I believe that it's worth a shot to continue striving to be better, striving to find, you know, the areas that we were maybe falling a little bit short with regards to the information that we were getting and the timeliness of that information and whatnot. And, you know, we... Each of us at the table here, we reserve the right to, in the future, if we don't believe it's working. I mean, anybody can motion for anything at any time for any reason. So if it's not working, if we find out that it's, you know, there's just not... You know, the pieces aren't falling into place, we can seek another change in the future, and I think it'll become obvious over time. But as long as we're taking proactive steps to try and get better and to try, do better, work together, I think that's kind of the main thing. And that's a message that the community needs to see, is that, "Look, we've made some changes. They maybe weren't perfect right out the chute, but we're aiming to get better, and we're aiming to take steps to better our process." And so because of that, I'll support the direction that we're going, and I will be cautious, optimistic moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm looking at our agenda for the 5:15 work session that we had, and I don't see anything on public works in there at all. And I know something happened in the last two weeks in public works. I also know that we get a Friday memo from our administrator, and there's on there public works, engineering, finance, da-da-da-da. Does the public get that memo? Is it sent to the Tribune? Is it spoken about up here at all? No. I also don't see anything on finance on here. Community development, it might... Something might reflect off of that, the civic center refrigeration system. That's something that's immediate, needs to be taken care of. It could have been taken care of in a committee meeting. Labor, you know, I know something's going on in the last two weeks, but what? If I don't know, the public don't know. There lies my reasoning for having the committee structure. Just the public does not know what's going on if I don't know what's going on. Just look at our agenda, and you'll see that nothing there for public works last two weeks. Public safety. And I know things have been going on. The Tribune used to print some of the numbers that our police chief would give us at the committee meetings as far as arrests or accidents, whatever. We get it in our Friday memo, but the public doesn't see it. They see us every two weeks, right here, about it. I don't see staff that often. Every two weeks, I get to see staff. We used to be... Have them at the committee meetings, and we'd sit down, four council members and a department head, get to know each other, and we'd be told what's going on. And I don't see it with this work session agenda. All I see in that is it makes our schedules easier. That's all I see in it. And I thank you for listening.
Thank you. I just want to point out that the police department statistics are on our agenda for tonight, and fire department statistics were on there at the previous meeting, so that is part of the public record that our city clerk did share with us today. Additional discussion. Can you read the motion back?
Motion is to stay with the work session format with separate labor meetings for the entire council. Have the finance report monthly and use the fifth Monday of the month that have the five Mondays for a special work session to catch up. And then just leave it open-ended and make the changes if needed, if there are any changes that you want, like say for a finance committee or what.
That wasn't in the motion, though, I don't believe, the last part.
That's what I have.
Was it?
No, it was a question, I think, after the fact. I think it was a question after the fact.
I thought there was a question after the fact. Mr. Scott.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just a procedural note. If this motion passes, what I would recommend doing is, since you went to the work session format by resolution, we would just take this motion, amend the resolution, bring it back to the council for formal approval at your next regular meeting.
Right.
And that would incorporate, again, if the motion passes, that would incorporate each of the components of the motion, as well as I think that would incorporate the open-ended nature of it as well.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there a reason it would be the fifth Monday? I mean, Monday's a busy day in the business world. I'm here five minutes to five or 10 minutes after every time we have the work sessions. Is there a reason that Monday's the... It's an important day or what? I mean...
We can go to whatever day you would prefer, but, I mean, the motion...
What I would prefer... Maybe we can change that up during the course of it. Instead of saying the next one will be on a Monday, we could say maybe it's Tuesday or Wednesday. Just give us that flexibility. Just say the fifth week of...
So what you would like to do is offer a friendly amendment that the day of the week would be...
Flexible.
The fifth... The fifth week, but one of those days of the week. It would never get passed, probably, what, the Wednesday, right?
Probably not.
Right, so it'd either be Monday or Tuesday.
Yeah, but it's a...
Do you want to offer that as amendment?
Pardon me?
You want to offer that as amendment?
Sure. Friendly amendment.
No.
Is there a second to the amendment?
If it's a friendly amendment, you just have to ask the maker of the motion, second.
The maker said no. Oh. So that's why I'm asking if there's a second to it.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded to have the additional meeting the week of the fifth week, one of those days.
Mr. Mayor, I'll withdraw my friendly amendment.
So we have a motion on the table. We've had it read to us. It'll come back to us in the form of a resolution at the next meeting. Additional discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Abstain.
One no and one abstention.
They're both no's.
Next, we have the... So that motion does pass. Auditorium environmental services proposal. Mr. Christensen is not able to be with us. Are you feeling ready to attack this animal, Mr. Brizendine?
I will do my best. Mayor Calvin, members of the council, before you is a council agenda report related to the auditorium and the issues in front of us at the auditorium. The introduction of this was to review proposals submitted for the gun range professional lead decant... Decontamination and ballistic block replacement. Bottom line is, we're looking at getting some cleaning done to the facility and replacing the block that is no longer... I shouldn't say no longer. That is soon to be out of its useful life. Our recommendation is to award the ballistic block replacement and professional lead contamination contact... Jeez, must have been an engineer writing this one. Can hardly read it. Contract to Green Bay Lead Services LLC in the amount of $50,265. Reappropriate $36,265 from the 2018 CIP tuck pointing project at the auditorium operating budget for the ballistic block replacements and professional lead contamination services. Yeah, that's correct. That's a mistake there, not the 2018 CIP, but the 2017 CIP. We've got... The facility is open currently with conceal and carry classes. Our open shooting begins after the deer hunting season, so about the middle of November, I believe, Jim. I don't have the date. If you've got that, somewhere around the 14th of November or something like that, the open shooting would take place. So our goal is to get this work done before the open shooting would take place. Before you... Up on the screen, you've got the usage reports as submitted by Mr. Anderson on behalf of the gun club and the folks that are involved in operating that for us. You see the numbers. We do two sessions annually, January 5th through April 28th of 2016, and 2000... Or November 15th through December 29th, 2016. Obviously, the first session's the longest as it goes throughout the winter and into early spring, and the second session is just about six to seven weeks long. So the facility gets a fair amount of usage between the open shooting and the conceal and carry classes, as well as, I believe, there's two Wilmer youth classes in there, and the New London Spicer class, youth class, also utilizes the range for the shooting portion of their training aspects. So it is a busy place. When we replaced the old system with the block system two and a half years ago, the assumption of the usage was not where it obviously is today. Thus, the blocks got a little bit more usage than what was anticipated, thus the useful life of them was not as long as what was anticipated when we put that system in. The bottom line is, we think that that's the best thing for us, is to replace the blocks, clean it while we are replacing the blocks, and move forward so that the season can continue.
Councilmember Shontis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At our September 5th city council meeting, there was a motion that was put before the council, a fifth part. There were four different parts of it, and then Councilmember Mesky offered a friendly amendment to explore other options besides the current block system for the ballistic corrections, and I'm wondering if there was any follow-up on that.
Are there alternatives? Were they discussed? Yes. Were they cheaper than what we're doing now? Yes, to a certain extent, but were they practical for our range? No. So there was follow-up. I discussed that myself personally with the fellow from, I believe, his range. So, yes.
So the recommendation of staff is to award the ballistic blocks replacement and professional lead decontamination contract to Green Bay Lead Services LLC in the amount of $50,265. Someone willing to make that motion?
I'll move to make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, according to this paperwork, then, and according to our history with the previous block system, $25,485 will be for the block replacement cost, $24,780 for the decontamination. Because initial life expectancy on the block was, I believe, three years, and we're now two years in, I think, going forward, are we going to be expecting, then, that block replacement will be $25,000, roughly $25,000, $26,000 every two years? Or do we have a new plan possibly in place for block rotation to maybe extend the life of that block? Or have any ideas been explored to extend that lifespan?
There are plans to be vigilant, maybe more vigilant, not to say anybody was lax over the last couple of years, but the expectation was for three years. But because of the amount of, you know, rounds fired, it didn't live up to the 36 months. And so, a couple of things, we're going to be more vigilant on how we rotate those out and how we cover those, and how many lanes are open and maybe rotate them out so that, you know, a couple of lanes just don't get, you know, all the usage. And so... But I would anticipate, right now, even being optimistic, I would say that you plan for every 24 months and hope for 36.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, is it appropriate to take comment from audience members? I see we have an audience member asking to speak. Is it appropriate to take that or no?
Well, we could do that if the council feels that that would add value. Are you saying you feel the conversation would add value?
Well, possibly, if it's regarding cost and life expectancy. If anybody has any ideas that can save the city money, I think it would be beneficial for us to hear it.
Okay. Mr. Peterson.
I'm hoping that's the case anyways.
Gary Peterson. As a significant user of the range, especially with our instructors coming in, there are certain advanced things that we do as instructors, such as drawing from the holster and drawing from the concealment, that you can't do back in the shooting bays. So up to this point in the last two and a half years, the only issue that we have been aware of is the lead control issue. So we have been inside the bays with disposable booties on, which we swap out every time we go in and out to control the lead. Up to this point, we had no idea that the ballistic block would be an issue. So our targets were up against the block, and we were inside. And for a two-day class, when you shoot 500 or 600 rounds at a closer distance, and our instructors are good shots, those all go in the same area. Now that we understand that that is... Now that we understand that that is a significant issue, that will no longer be happening. And I would expect that, I've done a lot of the decreased life of those blocks from our classes, so mea culpa.
We appreciate that.
Mea culpa, but that is not going to happen anymore. So I would expect that you'll, with, with what we are, the changes that we are going to make and in our classes, and with the cooperation of the other instructors, varying it a little bit, I would think we could get at least three years out of there, if not more, from those ballistic blocks.
Sure. And Gary, before you sit down, or Mr. Peterson, I apologize. Before you sit down, when you were here two weeks ago, you talked about shooting at angles.
Yes.
Remember that conversation?
Yes, an update on that. I had a class a week in between, and instead of going over one lane, I just had the people scoot over toward, to the side, and when the targets were halfway down, they were shooting in between. So the angles work without doing anything safety-wise that would compromise a, a major shooting angle or anything. So that's what I'm doing from now on in all of my classes, and if we can get all of the other instructors to do something similar, and in the open shooting classes, just that people are now aware that that is a problem, where we have not been in the past two and a half years. I think we'll get significant extra usage out of those ballistic blocks.
And then one other question. So we were closed for a year, and then we had very minimal use the following year. So then we came into 2016, and would you, and this is your professional opinion, in your opinion, would you say there were more round shot because of that pent-up demand or not?
No.
Okay, thank you. Does any of the council have questions for Mr. Peterson?
How do you, how are you going to communicate with the trainers or the instructors to your protocols that you're going to enact?
Well, through the, through the range, the Wilmer, the Wilmer range, and there are a limited number of instructors, and if we could, if we could post a sign down there. But I think now everybody's aware of the problem, and we are going to do everything we can to address that, just as we have done to control the lead issues down there.
Can you CC us and on that? When you instruct them, like via the emails, whatever you're going to tell them?
I'll work through Donovan. I'll, I'll communicate with him and have him communicate.
Sounds, sounds good.
We'll get that to you.
Thank you.
But you'll get ex, a lot of extra usage this time around.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Plowman. Councilmember Plowman. Councilmember Mesky, followed by Councilmember Christensen.
Well, I'm inclined to, to support putting the blocks back in. I was when we started this process. I was wondering if there were another way that was a little less expensive, but maybe not so much. I think we learned a lot in this process. We learned that putting blocks so we are shooting at a seam may not be the smartest thing to do, and maybe we should be moving some things around. I heard people talk about putting a separate set of blocks in front of the actual wall that could be rotated perhaps easier than having to rotate the entire wall. I think these are all good ideas, and I say we would do this, and then next time, if it continues to be an issue after, you know, these blocks run their course, then we may have to look at other options at that point, and lead free and other discussions that we've had. I'm comfortable with this, but I do have a question about these two bids. The Green Bay versus the other bid. I understand there's a significant difference here in the price, and I'm assuming that cost is for the removal of the lead-filled blocks, if the other system does not do that. If we were to, to secure a different person or vendor to take those spent blocks, what kind of expense would that be? And does it offset the Green Bay? I understand the Green Bay one, we have to not deal with that, but if we go with the other low bid, what would the expense be of getting rid of those lead-filled blocks?
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, councilmember Mesky. I don't know the number of businesses that do that work, so that, that's a difficult thing right there. I, I think what you're seeing is somewhat of the one-stop shop with Green Bay Lead, that they handle everything. I don't think you see that across the system. I don't think you've got a lot of companies that do that. Mr. Halliday should have stuck around for a couple hours. He could have stayed today and talked about the vendors that he was looking at when this system was put in. He would have a little more historical perspective, as he is the lead staff member on that task. But I do believe that Sean and Chris, as they, as they look for vendors to do this work, were very limited in who they could find to do it.
Well, my concern with Green Bay is that, that is the organ, that was the company that called, came in and told us there was an imminent ricochet, if, that's imminent, and we had a second person come in and say that that was not necessarily the case. So I'm a little gun shy about talking about Green Bay. Sorry.
We all caught that, by the way. Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to ask for a public comment also.
Thank you.
Mr. Plowman did that, so.
Councilmember Nelson.
Councilmember Mesky brought up the reports, and I think our administrator indicated that we did get a safety report back, but that has not been shared with the council. Could that be emailed to us? The, the report that you said we got, when we were questioning the comments that had been made about imminent danger, you said we had gotten a safety report back, that it was okay to hold the classes, et cetera.
We did.
Could you share that with us, please?
Sure, sure. I apologize. I thought I had done so, but I can send that out.
Okay. The second thing is, we did not receive a copy of the statistics that were up there. So if that could be sent to us also, the document that's up on the, we did not receive. The third question that I have is, there was a sheet in our handouts that was referencing a lead-free public gun range, and I'm just curious if someone would speak to that and where that document came from in the midst of all of the documents we got.
So I believe that the lead-free discussion happened subsequent to the last meeting. Councilmember Mesky had talked to me about, is there a possibility of doing lead-free shooting in the absence and then not having to use lead? And in talking with the shooters, they want to use the same materials that they use when they're out shooting as they are practicing. So it really ended up kind of being a chasing a rabbit, that when we talked to the shooters, they said, you know, that's fine, you can do that, but we're not going to want to do that, because, you know, we want to shoot the lead or the projectile that, I don't know if I'm saying that right. Am I saying that right, Gary? You want to shoot the same thing that you're going to shoot when you're actually shooting, right? You don't want to shoot lead-free and then lead? Is that correct? Yes. Okay. Councilmember Nelson.
So just clarification. I was told by someone who shoots that if you shoot on public property, you have to shoot lead-free. Is that correct? If you're shooting on public land? If you hunt on public land? I'm just curious.
Jim, can you come to the mic, please, so our citizens can hear you?
I believe the ruling is, I'm Jim Anderson, I believe the ruling is, if you're on a waterfall production area, which is federal land, then you must use steel shot.
Okay.
On a wildlife management area, you can use lead shot.
Okay. So it's more accept, more of an exception than the norm?
And it pertains more to shotguns than it does to rifles or pistols.
Okay, thank you.
Can I make another statement? Mr. Mesky, you had a question about the costs for hiring. On this comparative statement of Green Bay versus the range system, down toward the bottom on the right, it says third-party contractor would have to be hired for block disposal, estimated cost of $5,500.
Well, I'm curious what that is, because...
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I thought you didn't know the number. No, I, I, I say, I've been just curious if we have actually even talked about having that at all.
On this comparative of the expenses, there was, the disposal of blocks for range systems says can't do it due to EPA regulations, but further down, it says you'd have to hire a third party for $5,500. Right, okay. I didn't hear what you'd said. I apologize.
Thank you, Jim. And I would say, since you have that one, if you added 15.6 with 55, you end up with about 21,000 versus the 25,400 with the Green Bay as the other group. So I'd just say there's a savings there if we were to actually go with the other range systems and actually had someone else pick up that lead as a third party.
Councilmember Schwantus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just note that Green Bay Lead is offering 76 blocks, excuse me, 84 blocks, where the range system is only 65 blocks, and that's why I think there's such a difference in those two. Then if I could also, the CAR indicates that payment of this would come from the tuck pointing at the auditorium. Could we just hear if, if I recall, tuck pointing was approved by the council to, to go forward, is there an expectation that the cost of tuck pointing would be less than the $100,000 that was appropriated?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the reason that the tuck pointing, there's two reasons why the recommendation came from the tuck pointing appropriation. The first one is that due to the lateness of the season, it, it doesn't appear that it would be real feasible without tarping and heating to do the tuck pointing yet this year. And the second one is that the updated estimates have increased dramatically, and will have to be addressed at a future meeting.
We always get good news, don't we? Councilmember Schwantus.
I would just note that the tuck pointing is for 2018's budget, but I'm just unfortunate to hear that the cost of it has increased, so thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson.
I'm concerned also about removing that from that budget. Do we have another option to come up with the money other than taking it from the tuck pointing?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that, as Mr. Brizendine mentioned, was a typo in the committee action form. It is actually budgeted in the 2017 budget, not the 2018, as far as the tuck pointing.
I'm, I, I, okay, I hear that one, but do we have another option so that we don't decrease the amount for the tuck pointing, because we did agree that it needed to be done?
The council has always used the process as of looking at a kind of a step process and looking at any kind of excess capital dollars if they haven't been spent. Then they look at the operational costs of different budgets, and then they look at the revenues in the general fund, if there are excess revenues over what's anticipated. And so those, that's kind of the process that we go through in making the recommendation. This is based on conversations among staff at this point.
Councilmember Nelson.
So can I ask for further clarification? Are we putting additional dollars in then next year to do tuck pointing, or?
This is the first I've heard about it, so.
Okay, so there's two different subjects here. One is getting it approved, but where's the money going to come from? So I, I don't want to take a soft track of, of that, because I, I guess I'm not in favor of removing it from the tuck pointing.
I will just say that, you know, as we go through the next couple of months, there's a number of small items such as this that we are keeping track of, and so that when we pull something out of the tuck pointing, we will put it back in. And so then that will be, you know, part of the amendment in the final draft that we will, the council will approve or not approve on December 5th.
Should we make a motion, Judy?
No, I don't think so.
Yeah. As, as council saying we have a motion, and staff is trying to figure out if we have a motion.
Christensen.
Christensen made the motion, seconded by Plowman. Additional discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
We've instruct, we've approved things before and instructed staff to find the money versus taking it off from something on a project that the, I think, we're expecting to be done. So I am, are they two separate ones, or is the motion part of where the funds are coming from?
If you, I believe it's in the CAR. It says that it demonstrates where the money is coming from. I don't know if it's part of the motion, but gives the council guidance where the funds are coming from. The, the, the tuck pointing is not going to be done this year.
I understand that, but I don't know that it was added into next year's budget to get done, is the question that I asked.
It's, it's not in the budget now, but it's part of the list of comprehensive items that we're compiling that will come back to the council.
Yeah, I'm not sure why we chose tuck pointing when we know that that's a controversial area to take the money out of, unless that was the only place that we could find money. I'm not sure. Councilmember Mesky.
Well, again, I'm going to advocate for maybe a, a change away from Green Bay. You know, I just heard, you know, that they offer 84 blocks, an extra in case more are discovered unusable. I don't know why we would buy unusable blocks, but calculating the cost, that's $80 a block, and if we were to go from 65 to 84, that's 1,500 bucks. So it's still significantly different, lower price to go with that system than the other one. And I guess at this point, I'm looking to save the dollars and make this system work.
So are you making a motion?
I'm seeing if there's a flavor for it first.
Councilmember Nelson.
I'm going to ask staff, because it was my understanding that all the blocks, because of how they were installed, all the blocks needed to be removed, that you couldn't just pick and choose which blocks you could remove, so.
Yeah, what Councilmember Mesky is saying is that we shouldn't remove all the blocks. That's what he's saying. He's adding the 84 in.
I'm saying Green Bay Lead with their price quote is saying, well, they're going to give us 84 blocks with 76 to be used, and they say they're giving us extra if some of them are discovered unusable. And then, of course, they have their block replacement costs and their decontamination costs, as well as their removal costs. I'm saying range system says 65 blocks, which I'm assuming their blocks must be bigger to be able to make that wall in the back. And you want to, and if you want these extra blocks, which I think could be useful in front of the wall, so you could actually have a longer life of those things, I'm saying you go to the 84-block number, for those blocks would only be $1,500 more, and if you add that with the 15,000 for the rest of the blocks, and even put in that 5,500 of removal, we're still lower than Green Bay's quote. And I, and I will assume, I don't know who gave us the new price or the new go-ahead that the range was usable. I hope it was this company.
Councilmember Nelson.
Staff recommended this proposal. Can, since Mr. Christensen isn't here, can someone speak to why this company was recommended?
Mr. Holland, do we know that answer? Why this one was recommended over the other one, when the other was cheaper?
I think both companies are qualified. I will say that first. I think that he went with Green Bay simply because of the comprehensiveness of the bid. The second bid was not complete. It was going to require a bid out of additional work, the hollow way of the lead. There was also, if I recall correctly off the top of my head, the, just the removal of that lead out of the basement, that was going to have to be by staff, if I remember right. So there was going to, it was not just going to be, you know, a bid with another company. It was going to have, require some staff as well as this other company. And so that's why he felt like, exposed with all the safety issues that we have in that building with contamination, that they would go with professional services. Now, that's the best of my ability. I think, you know, obviously, our engineer would give you a more qualified explanation, but that's what I recall.
I'm not seeing a big appetite.
I hear that.
Seeing you were wondering who was hungry.
Thanks.
So we have a motion that's been seconded to award the ballistic blocks replacement and professional lead decontamination contract to Green Bay Lead Services LLC in the amount of $50,265. That motion has been made and seconded. Also included in that is to reappropriate the 2017 CIP tuck pointing to the auditorium to cover the ballistic blocks. That's the motion we have on the table. I would also like to compliment Donovan Keel. I had an opportunity to meet with him last week. He gave me a call. He really knows what's going on when it comes to shooting. He gave a very thorough report to me, and so I speak in favor of this motion as well, although I don't, I don't vote on this, but I just wanted to thank Donovan publicly for taking the time to meet with me in regards to this. We're re-appropriating money again, so this must be a roll call then. Roll call.
Councilmember Fairley.
Aye.
Nelson. Aye. Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantus.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Plom.
Aye.
Edi, Zionez.
And that resolution does pass. Next is consideration of individuals for the task force for Robins Island Park. Mr. Holland.
Trying to find the sheet, but I will just say that mayor and council, this is a task force that the mayor has proposed and, and that I have participated in. And we have in your packet a list of the names of those that he is proposing be part of this task force, including staff members and council members and stakeholders within the community. This task force would be a continuation of the volunteer work and entrepreneurship out at Robins Island Park. Right now, as you know, there's still continuation of efforts in that facility to make it the showplace that it deserves to be, including a new signage that is being provided for by our local Rotary International Club. So, I would say that I would recommend approval for the consideration of the names of these individuals for the task force.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. And just for the council, Councilmember Fagerly and Councilmember Nelson will be the two that will be serving on that. So, additional discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next, we have the city administrators' comments. Mr. Holland.
The first thing I want to mention is that I sent, sent out a message, is it, was it called Doodle? Or is it Noodle? I don't know.
Doodle poll?
Doodle poll. And I, I did get some response back and right now I have on the calendar, the, this is for our Labor Council meeting. It would be a special meeting, executive session on the 26th of October. And I would like to have that this month because myself and our HR director are going to meet with the labor unions this month in our initial conversation. And if we can have a follow-up meeting at the end of the month, that's a Thursday, the 26th, it would be at 5:00. And most of you have replied back, have said that you can make that date. So, can we tentatively, everyone write that on your calendars right now?
I'm out of town that day.
Really? Wow, okay.
That's fine. I mean, you can still meet. It's fine.
The 26th, you said?
Yes.
At?
5:00.
Here?
Where?
Here or where?
It would be at the City Hall Conference Room.
There'd be a closed meeting because of its strategy?
Right. Be an executive session. The next thing is that we do have an update on the tennis court at Miller Park and that we have been approved $10,000 in a grant from the USTA. And regionally, we're being considered for another $20,000 for that project. And so, we'll hopefully in the next month or so, get word back on that project. Also, just a reminder that the hospital will be having a town hall meeting at the conference center this Thursday and also tomorrow night. Those of you that are on the board to work with the hospital on the transaction, we will have our meeting also tomorrow night. And that's all I have, Mayor.
And I believe I'm starting with Councilmember Fagerly for Councilmember comments.
Nothing to say. Thanks.
Councilmember Nelson.
Just an announcement, the city joined the Highway 23 Coalition and there is going to be a transportation rally with Commissioner Zelli from Minnesota Department of Transportation on Friday, October 13th. It's from 11:45 to 1:15 out at O'Neill's in Spicer. If there, that flyer perhaps could be sent out to the council, but it is open to the public. There is an RSVP that's recommended.
Councilmember Christensen, that's what we got handed at the meeting last night.
I think Aaron did that, but I can, I thought Aaron had done that. He just sent it to the three of us, or?
Right. And I think Councilmember Plom was also on that, but not the rest. Councilmember Christensen, Swantus, Alvarado.
Homecoming week for the high school. There's going to be a lot of activities with the young people chasing around. Be, be aware. Homecoming game is on Friday. It's Cardinal pride induction. There are six members getting in, so it's going to be a big deal, pretty exciting stuff. So, be aware, wear your red and white and enjoy the football game and all the activities that the Wilmer Cardinal kids do. Thank you.
Councilmember Osmond.
He stole part of my thunder. I was, I was going to also say that it's homecoming week. And I would just ask parents to please talk to your children about their driving after some of their homecoming activities. There may be, I don't know, there may be some toilet papering. It's not a felony. They don't have to drive 100 miles an hour when they leave. Not that I'm advocating for toilet papering. I've just heard that it happens. But please, please drive, drive safe and talk to your children about being safe.
Thank you. Councilmember Mesky.
I just reiterate the city administrator's comment about the public forum this Thursday. 5:30, 7:30, Wilmer Conference Center about the Central Care Rice ACMC collaboration. I've been feeling a lot of questions about the, the idea and if you have those, I'm directing them all to go and share those this week. So, please attend if you have those questions.
Is it Thursday, you said?
Thursday, October 5th, 5:30, 7:30, Wilmer Conference Center.
It's hosted by the Wilmer Chamber of Commerce as a community-wide opportunity.
It's from 5:30 to 7:30. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
You made it sound like it was 5:30 and then again at 7:30, so.
Oh, no, it goes two hours. Motion adjourned.
Come on.
Adjourned.